It's 6:30 PM on Monday, April the 22nd. And I now call the Winton Woods City School Board of Education to order. Please turn your cellphones to silence and rise with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Rugliss.
Present.
Mr. Birdy.
Present.
Dr. Culetti.
Present.
Mrs. Kuhn.
Present.
Dr. Johns.
Present. As we work through the agenda tonight, I would like to just remind our listening audience that all of the work that we do follows the SMART, specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-sensitive goals that have been established within the district, which include student achievement, resource alignment, and community engagement. With that said, our first item on the agenda is our District Honors, Recognitions, Gifts, and Introductions. I would like to invite board member, Mr. Jeff Birdy, to take his place at the podium. And Superintendent Smith, you have the floor.
The first District Honors, Recognition, Gifts, and Introductions are for the Primary South Art Gallery winners. And is Ms. Calderon here? Ms. Wallace?
I'm directing traffic.
Is your student here tonight?
Everybody's here, sir.
Can she come up?
Which one did you call?
Calderon?
Who is it?
Yar- Yar- Yes.
You're up first, everybody.
I thought that was you.
I know you were ready.
I'm ready.
Have her come around.
She's in what grade, Ms. Wallace? Second grade, working with watercolors. Amazing. So hold your picture up. So this particular picture, we selected it as a superintendent's selection simply because this is really a picture of Ms. Wallace when she first got her job and she was excited. So look at her face. Hold it up for the crowd, please. High up. Hold it up, Ms. Wallace, for her. She was excited that she was going to be a Winton Woods Warrior. So this picture's going to be placed in a beautiful frame. It's going to be hung in administrative offices, and we're going to keep it here until you graduate years from now. All right? So bring our family up for a photo. There was a tie for the superintendent's selection, and we've never had a tie before. And I'd like for Lillian Mitchell to come up. Now, this particular picture was one of Ms. Wallace when we told her she was going to keep her job another year. Family, come up, please. All of you. I think this is incredible work for a second grader. Oh, we do need the pictures so that we can keep them framed. Yes. Thank you very much. The next award is the principal's selection, and I'd like for Ms. Wallace to tell us a little reason why she chose Isaac Adamson. Come on up, Isaac.
So I love the colors, and it ju- I'm a primary person. I was a primary teacher, and this just speaks to being a little person. So he did a phenomenal job, and he's in first grade. I do have to say, now Isaac's sister is not in kindergarten yet, but she was the best dancer at our primary crime.
There you go.
Hi, hi. Where are these people?
Boy's never gonna get in these, don't get in them.
Frame that one.
I'll let you go to the other two.
Kyler, come on out. We're done with Winter, but this is so awesome, and I love how the house is sitting behind the mountains, and Kyler is also a phenomenal first grader.
Fantastic. Come on up, please. Introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Jim Hadley. I'm currently the president of the Green Hills Forest Park Kiwanis Club for the coming year. Well, the rest of this year, shall we say? And I'm here, very proud to be able to present these awards to very worthy and deserving students.
Okay, our first Kiwanis Characterist Key Award goes for the noteworthyness of integrity. Aiden Martin, first grader. Is Aiden here tonight? So Ms. Wolf writes a nice bio on Aiden. Aiden is our character counts for the month of April because he is always making great choices in the classroom. He is a focused learner who acts like a leader in the classroom. He is very likable and is always trying his best. Aiden is very honest, respectful to his classmates as well as his teacher. This is April Wolf, Primary South, first grade teacher for Aiden Martin, Characterist Key. Is Eric here tonight? May come in later, will come back. The next one is the Skyline Student Athlete of the Month. And this one will go to our very own Maya Johnson. A little information about Maya before our family comes up. From soccer to track, Maya Johnson is a hard worker, compassionate, and is a natural leader on and off the field. This season, she's worked hard setting and achieving her personal best times. As coaches, we love her dedication and drive to improve. We are proud to have a student athlete of this caliber. Coaches Kristen Miller and Chip Wilson. To be nominated for the Skyline Student Athlete of the Month, student must maintain an academic standard of 3.0 or above or higher. Show respect for coaches, teammates, officials, teachers, other students, and family. Show enthusiasm and a positive attitude. Display commitment to practice games and personal skill development. Demonstrate honesty in playing by the rules. Have high moral character. The Skyline Student Athlete of the Month is sponsored by the Forest Park Skyline Chili Restaurant, a business partner of Winton Woods City Schools. Maya, thank you. So we have a tradition in the district. If you're taller than the podium, we expect you to say something. After your picture, Maya, we're ready. Not a speech, just tell us how much you love us and we'll tell you the same.
Okay. Where do I start?
You should start with that first lady in the stripes.
Okay. I'm thankful for both my parents for pushing me to be my best on the field and in class because they're really strict on me getting my grades together before I can just play whatever sport or decide what I want to do. So I'm thankful for that because if it wasn't for that, I'm pretty sure I wouldn't be as successful as I am.
Bravo. So if there's a great student athlete of the month, there has to be a great teacher of the month. And the Winton Woods Primary South has nominated Ms. Katie Stevens. So I'm going to read a little bit. This is from her very own principal, Ms. Danielle Wallace. Ms. Wallace, can you come up, please? Put your arm around her like you love her. Okay. Katie Stevens, physical education teacher at Winton Woods Primary South, is the April Skyline Teacher of the Month. This is not a student in the- there is not a student in the building who doesn't absolutely love Ms. Stevenson-Stevens. Maybe it's because her class is always fun. Maybe it's because she intentionally develops relationships with every student every day. Or maybe it's because she has a knack for tapping into socio-emotional needs of all students, not just the ones who love Jim. Ms. Stevens is a master teacher. On any given day, you'll find her students engaged in not only physical activities that stretch students both academically and physically, but more importantly, she plans lessons that are highly engaging. Students as young as kindergarten can successfully demonstrate yoga postures, measure their heart rate, and set long-term fitness goals based on their experiences in her class. In addition to being a master teacher, Ms. Stevens is also our resident child whisperer. Wow. I wonder what she says in those kids' ears, right? She uses no-nonsense nurturing protocols with ease. Students appreciate her wit and humor. Oftentimes, you can find not only myself but other members of our team participating in physical education class with her and the students. Last year, as part of her PBL experience, she gave second-grade students the opportunity to plan and lead all of our field day activities. The event was a huge success. All students appreciate the opportunity to earn brag tags in her class. These special tags are not only just given to the best athlete, but oftentimes are given to the student that shows grit, determination, and perseverance. I appreciate her flexibility, her creativity, and her passion in and outside of the classroom. She has planned school-wide community service activities like Hoops for Hearts and fieldtrips to the Xavier University and University of Cincinnati. Ms. Stevens is an invaluable member of the Primary South family. In addition to being an amazing teacher, she is also an active member of our mindfulness team, a group that gathers monthly to support the mental health and welfare being of our teaching staff. As principal, I see Ms. Stevens as a collaborator, an advocate for all kids, a leader, and a role model for staff and students. I'm honored to have an opportunity to recognize her for all she does and all she brings to Primary South. Danielle Wallace, principal. Thank you.
I don't need the microphone. I'm a P.E. teacher, I'm loud. But I thought of two words, support and authenticity. So support, I- we have- I have a great supportive staff. Without my principal, I don't- I mean, these things wouldn't be possible. I have great coworkers who are like my family. I have awesome parents, and they're supportive and their community is. And then authenticity for me is I can be an authentic teacher. I can create authentic relationships with my students, and I think that's the most important that- well, part for our students being- achieving at a higher level. So those are the two words that came to my mind when I thought about Winton Woods. And so someplace is my home now, and I will never leave. So don't worry.
Way to go.
And this is our little wee warrior, also it's my daughter Ava and my husband Mike.
Our next award is a special recognition award, and I'd like to bring up an incredible teacher. I mean, she is absolutely amazing. Ms. Alice Snead, teacher. The Board of Education congratulates Ms. Snead, who was recently elected to the National Association of Educators. She serves as the Black Caucus Mid-Atlantic Director for Ad Hoc Committee for NEA to support ethnic minority teachers and is running for the Ohio Association of Educators Board of Directors, our very own Ms. Alice Snead. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the board for recognizing me. I was elected to the Ohio Education Association Board of Directors, and I will be-
Amazing.
Thank you. Becky Higgins, who is the president, called me last week. I was supposed to start till September, but she would like for me to start in May, so I'm going to get sworn in in May. I have been active in the Ohio Education Association NEA for some time, and I have been encouraged to run for office. But I'm a behind-the-scenes kind of person. But just seeing the changes in education and what's going on, I figure that if I'm not at the table, that I can't suggest or give my ideas about change. There's so many changes that needs to take place within education for our children and for educators. So I'm hoping and I'm excited about my new position, and I'm hoping that the things that I have to bring to the table with OEA, that they will listen concerning our students, funding, teacher evaluation, and I can go on and on and on about the things that are on my list of things.
Superintendent's evaluation.
Okay, superintendent's evaluation. So again, I am very excited about being elected, and I'm looking so forward to working with OEA.
Thank you.
This is my grandson Jamir. I know Winton Woods, a couple of years ago, he was hit by a car, had a traumatic brain injury, and so he's with us tonight, and it's just a miracle that what I can see what God has done in his life.
Amazing.
And so I really appreciate the staff. Whenever you see me, you ask about Jamir, how's he doing? And so now you get a chance to see how well he is doing. This is my husband Clifford and my daughter Amber.
Is Ms. Kathy Gray here tonight? Okay, we'll save her until next month. I'd like to bring up a- two incredible people that decided to make a difference in young people's lives. We've been talking about the merger of athletics and academics, and the young ladies that you're going to meet tonight, which are part of the inaugural softball team of the middle school. Last year, we did a collection. We calculated their GPA, and their GPA collectively without playing sports was a 2.5. Their GPA collectively playing sports is a 3.2. So Coach Rozell and Coach Wilson says that that should be up to a 3.5 next year. Hint, hint. Okay? And one of the things that we realized, we were competing with young people. We were starting athletics for girls softball in ninth grade, but some of our competitors were starting as early as middle school. And the two coaches came together with the athletic director, Mr. Merrill in the back, and they decided that we would actually challenge ourselves to have a girls softball team this year. If you want to be entertained, please come out and watch them play. I've watched softball for many years. I've never seen a team like this one. They are absolutely incredible in so many different ways. They're doing things that I've never seen people do with a softball. That's all I can tell you. So I'd like to have their coaches introduce them. But before they come up, Ms. Wilson is one of their coaches, but she's also our attorney, and she is also our HR director. Ms. Wilson has made an additional sacrifice to come to work as early as 6:45 in order to curts the girls in the evening so that she could make sure that all of her work assignments are done, so I applaud her for that. So that's 6:45 AM, folks. So I'd like to have the coaches come up and introduce the girls and say a little bit about their skill position and what they do.
Good evening. I am Coach Rozell. I'm a language arts teacher at the middle school, and we are really, really pleased with the progress that we've seen in these young ladies. None of them had any softball experience prior to the start of this season. I had someone ask me if they could play fifth base. So that tells you where we were with this whole thing. I was traumatized, but I was also excited because they were willing to learn the game. They listened to the coaches, and they have maintained their enthusiasm throughout the entire program. And I have seen them progress all the way through, and we're very, very pleased with all of them. All right, I would like Ms. Arianna Stallworth to join us. Arianna does outfield positions. She's very little, but she can handle it. Then I need Ms. Kaylee Sanders. She is third base. Ms. Zikea Gardner, right field. Ms. Kamora Hart is my shortstop. Ms. Kiara Lewis, she's been a little versatile for us. She was starting as our catcher, and she wanted to transition and learn some other things, so she's also doing second base. Brooklyn Lee, come on up. She is centerfield. Ms. Alyssa Brown joins us. She has done two positions for us as well. She starts at first base, but she also pitches. Then I have Ms. Brooklyn Culver. She does outfielding work for us. Ms. Maya Fitzpatrick, she's been all over the place learning, and we appreciate her for that. And finally, Ms. Hatiana McKnight. She's also an outfielder. We have two young ladies that are not with us this evening. Ms. Ashley Hernandez, she's a third baseman and catcher. And our pitcher, Ms. Divine Bryant, she also plays first base. They're not with us this evening.
Hello. Okay, so I would like to thank Mr. Smith because he came out to one of our practices and he attempts at bat, and it was- it was good, and he gave us some advice, and our team, we had come a long way, and you know, we argue and stuff, and that's how we get past everything, and it's been good, and most of us are looking forward to doing it at high school, so thank you guys for everything.
Mr. Merrill, Athletic Director for the middle school. Want to come up and say a few words, please?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. When we first broached the idea of having this team, there was a lot of pros, a lot of cons of, should we even do this? And after much debate, there was one conclusion, that we had to start this program. And these girls have gone far past what I expected in this first year. I really did not know what to expect, but this was not what I expected, and they far succeeded it. Just talked with some of the coaches of the other teams that we played already this year. They were quite impressed, quite complimentary. They almost wanted to think of it as, what are these girls doing? Why are- why is Winton Woods doing this all of a sudden? And they left knowing why we did it. And it's been a very positive comments and positive energy from not just our kids, but kids around the city. We're moving forward into the ECC in the fall of 2020, and this is the only way we're going to be able to compete at the next level, is these girls getting this opportunity at this young of an age. And to be quite honest, there's not a lot of middle schools that sponsor middle school softball. There really isn't. They've only played five games this year because there's just not a lot of teams to play. There's club teams out there, but school-sponsored teams. So we're on the cutting edge of middle school sports, and that's only going to treat us down the road a lot more positively. And I'm very excited for our program moving forward. I was the varsity coach for 16 years, and we just never got the energy or the interest at the level, at the middle school level, that we have now, and it's just tremendous. And I look forward to a lot of great things. Coach Rozell and Coach Wilson have shown tremendous amount of patience for these girls. Like she said, fifth base. When she told me that story after the first practice, I was like, what did we do? What did we do here? But then you go out and watch them play, and I know what we did here, and it's nothing but positive. And so ladies, keep it up, and look forward to great things here in the next few years watching you guys play at the varsity level.
So Ms. Jackson, we're going to squeeze them in tight because I'd like for their family members to come up to be part of this inaugural experience. So family members, if you're here tonight, come up and take a picture with your daughters. Our next award goes to an organization that's been a very, very sound piece, a very, very capable piece, a group of people that have shared the same vision that we have in our district. And the minister could not be here tonight, but I'd like to have Dr. Wharton come up and accept this award on his behalf. Dr. Wharton from Quinn Chapel AME. Yes, sir.
Just a few words. Okay. Thank you so much, Superintendent Smith, for honoring Quinn Chapel AME Church for the work that we do. We believe that this work is very important. It is a part of our discipleship. We are a church, African Methodist Episcopal Church. And our job is to not just be spiritual in our church and in our area, but to reach out to the community and to work within the community. And we've been doing this, I know I've been doing it for 25 years. We've been in the district for 25 years, and I've been associated with Quinn Chapel for 25 years. And so I look at this as a part of my mission, as a part of my discipleship. I began with mentoring in the AGS program there, and for some reason, I got involved in substitute teaching as well. I guess I wasn't satisfied to stay in the mentoring for students, and I wanted to get back in the classroom. And what I've found is that there is such a need for us, those of us who have been associated as teachers, and those of us that are business people, to come back into the schools and see what's going on with our young students. They need us. Believe me, they need us. So thank you again for this award. We're going to continue to do this work. So thank you for the award.
Thank you very much, sir. Our last Community Spirit Award goes to, I don't know if there's a representative here from Jake Sweeney Chrysler Jeep Dodge Ram. Yes, sir. This company has fulfilled a variety of obligations or opportunities for us. And I'm not sure if you guys have ever seen the incredible Homecoming Parade, but this organization provides us with all the vehicles for the parade at no cost, and they have been very, 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 very supportive. So thank you for everything, sir. We appreciate it.
Well, first of all, I'm a resident of Forest Park. I've been in Forest Park since 1979, and all six of our children have graduated from Witten Woods High School. I have been with the Sweeney Organization since 1974, and as I was sitting there with my wife, I, I just, the thought came to me and said that it's been 40 years that we have been in the Forest Park District, and it's been a great opportunity. It's been a great opportunity to be able to work at Jake Sweeney Automotive. And it's always an honor to be able to do whatever we can do to help the youth in our communities in giving them guidance and a bright future that can be had. And Dr. Smith, just the other day, I don't know if you remember, but you were standing right next to me in Jake Sweeney BMW. You were at the parts counter, and I was looking at you, and I kept saying...
You were looking up at me, sir?
I was looking up.
Okay, all right.
And I was, and I was, and I was saying, and I recognized the face, but I just couldn't put a name with it until I came in here this evening.
Yes, sir.
But once again, it's an honor, it's a privilege from Jake Sweeney Automotive to be able to receive this reward, and we look forward to be able to contribute in the future.
Why don't we have the both Community Spirit recipients and their families come up and take a picture collectively? Dr. Wharton? Is there someone here with you tonight, sir?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Well, you all know Kim Johnson.
Nice picture. Madam President and Board, those are all the honors, recognitions, and gifts for this evening.
Wow, that's always an enjoyed, enjoyable thing to watch all these gifts, honors, and recognitions. Thank you, Mr. Birdy, and thank you, Superintendent Smith. And congratulations to all of our students, our teachers, and the administrators, as well as our wonderful community partners, for the dedication and sacrifice for all that you do for our district. We truly, truly appreciate what you do for our district. We'll now take a five-minute recess, so that you all, those of you who want to be dismissed can be dismissed, and gives us an opportunity to come out and congratulate you. Thank you. We now resume our regular board meeting, and the next item on the agenda is 4.01, Public Comments. And I did not receive any sheets for public comments, so we'll move on to 5.01. The Witten Woods Teachers Association, I don't see a representative in the room. So we'll move on to 5.02, the Ohio Association of Public School Employees. And we have a representative, President Shonda Ferguson-Gordon. You have the podium.
Good evening, Board members. Mr. Smith.
Good morning.
Um, I just want to say thank you for acknowledging OC tonight, and it's been an experience this year. We're still excited about the new schools. I'm really excited because watching them go up, man, have you guys been noticing what's been going on? Get like, yeah.
Yes, yes. So exciting.
But I didn't have anything really to say. I'm glad everybody came back from the holidays safe, and I just want to say thank you for acknowledging OC. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, President Ferguson-Gordon. The next item on the agenda is 6.01, the approval of minutes as presented. Board, unless you see any necessary changes to these minutes, a motion would be in order.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Rugless.
Aye.
Mr. Birdy.
Aye.
Dr. Culetti.
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn.
Aye.
Dr. Johnson.
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is 7.01, our treasurer's report of the financial statements for March 2019. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes. Through, for the general fund, through the month of March, the revenues in the general fund were 42.3 million. For the month of March, we received about 3 million in state, foundation, and also some real estate tax advances. Our year-to-date expenditures in the general fund are right at 38.1, bringing us currently under budget by about 6.5%. At this time last year, we were running right around that same percentage. Our year-to-date financial activity for all funds, we had 83 million unencumbered, 22.7 was the general fund, and 59 million in our construction, building construction funds. And that would be a summary of the financials for you.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. No objections being heard. Let the financial statements for the month of March be submitted for audit. The next item on the agenda is 8.01, the treasurer's recommendation of investments for March.
Yes. For the month of March, we had $96 million invested. We earned $102,000 in interest. Sometimes I just wish this were my personal accounts, but it's not. And the general fund won, earned 32,000. Our building funds earned 80,000 for the month of March.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the investment report as presented. I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Sure. Mrs. Rugless.
Aye.
Mr. Birdy.
Aye.
Dr. Culetti.
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn.
Aye.
And Dr. Johnson.
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 8.02, the resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them for the county auditor. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor again.
Yes. Before you, you have the approval of the amounts and rates. And basically, what that basically says is that the auditor has set your millage for each of your funds, your general fund, your permanent improvement fund, and your bond retirement fund. And it also is stating the amount of collections from those funds. The only thing I would like to point out is that we did pass the substitute levy in place of the original emergency levy. And last year, that ran, that was 9.78 mils. They're projecting for January that to be 9.14. So basically, we have reduced the emergency levy to our own, to our residents. Their actual cost of that emergency levy was reduced by .75 mils. I just thought I would share that for the upcoming amounts and rates. And with that, I would ask you to approve it so we could submit it to the county auditor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion is in order to approve this resolution.
I'd like to make that we accept the resolution on rates as presented by Mr. Seymour.
It's been motioned. Do we need a second? All right. It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion for Mr. Seymour?
I just wanted to comment. I appreciate you bringing out the point that there was a reduction to our constituents. Everyone's pleased to hear that, I'm sure. Thank you.
At least we were able to uphold our promise that it would be no increase.
Right. That's true.
Thank you. There is no other discussion. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mrs. Rugless.
Aye.
Mr. Birdy.
Aye.
Dr. Culetti.
Aye.
Mrs. Kuhn.
Aye.
And Dr. Johnson.
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 9.01, the reports of the superintendents for school reports. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board, this is a very exciting time in the year where there are just a multitude of activities going on in every school. So I will attempt to highlight some of them from each school. Of course, there is a collective one where there are parent-teacher conferences on April 25th. And for parents that are watching Waycross Media, please remember that April 26 is interim report. This is your last midterm report of the school year. Parent-teacher conferences are April 25 and 26, 5 to 8 a.m., 5 to 8 p.m., excuse me, at the Primary North, and 9 to 4, again on the next day. There is a professional development day for all stu, for all, excuse me, staff, where there are no students to report. There's a kindergarten shadow day during the school on May 1st. And of course, Teacher Appreciation Week is May 6 to the 10th. And the May 7 is the superintendent state of the schools, right here in this media room, and it's from 6 to 7. Those are the things that are happening at Primary North for the primary group, especially for preschool. On April 30, first grade exhibition night, 6 to 7. May 3, there's a volunteer luncheon for all the volunteers that have served in Mr. Jones' school. That's 12 to 1. In the Primary South Building, May 3 is volunteer appreciation breakfast, 9 to, 9:30 to 10:30. And it would be really good if board members could show up for that. Parents would love to see you. May 4 is the Spring Carnival, 9:30 to 11:30. That should be exciting. I think Mr. Denny has agreed to go into a dunking booth, so we'll see how that works out. On May 8, there is an art gallery and music showcase at the elementary school, and that's from 6 to 8 o'clock. May 2, in the intermediate building, there is a band and concert choir, 7 to 8. Intermediate honors Night, 6 to 7 on May 13. And of course, the great visit to Camp Campbell Guard, May 20 to 22nd, on the 22nd, for fifth graders. On May 2, in the middle school, there's a Witten Woods Middle School Spring Sing Choir Concert, 7 to 8. And finally, these, this next one, there's a combination of activities that happen in the high school as well as the community building. April 30, Band Senior Recognition Concert, 7 to 8:30. Senior Academic Signing, 9 to 11 on May 3. The Witten Woods High School Prom at Paul Brown Stadium, May 3, 8 to 11:30. The Performing Arts Boosters Music Awards, 7 to 8:30 on May the 6. May 8, Witten Woods High School Career Fair for Seniors, 1 to 3. The Capstone Showcase and International Fair, May 9, 5 to 7. Varsity Ensemble and Jazz Band Concert, May 9, 7 to 8:30. May 14, Superintendent's Honors Scholars Dinner, 4:30 to 6. The Witten Woods High School Senior Awards, May 14, 7 to 10, woo, 7 to 10 p.m. I mean, that's a lot of awards. 7 to 10. Might go 7 to 11, so just make sure you have enough film, Waycross. Senior Exams, May 14 to the 16th. Senior Reflections, May 15. There's a very, very important senior parent meeting, May 17, 9 a.m. to 10:30. And then there's another senior parent meeting for the parents who have different schedules that will be May 20, 6 to 7:30. Spring Sports Award, May 20, 7 to 8:30. And then there's a Great Senior Mandatory Graduation Practice and Warrior Rally, 7:15 to 12 p.m. on May 20. Remember, these are shared attributes that are happening in the community school as well.
That's a lot.
It is a lot.
May is going to be incredibly busy, so keep your finger on the pulse of that. Okay. The next item on the agenda is 9.02. There's first reads for revised board policies. Mr. Smith, you have the floor again.
Yes, Madam President and Board. Revised Policy 3362, professional staff anti-harassment. Revised Policy 5517, students anti-harassment. Policy 5610, students removal, suspensions, expulsions, and permitted conclusion of students. Then there's a revised Policy 5610.02, students alternative school assignments. Revised Policy 5610.03, students emergency removal. Revised Policy 5611, students due process rights. 6325 is a revision as well, finances, procurement, federal grants. And finally, your first reads, Board, is the Revised Policy 8141, operations mandatory reporting of misconduct by licensed employees.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Does anyone have any questions for discussion for Mr. Smith on these first reads? Just as a reminder, Board, these are first reads. They're for information at this point, but we will be, need to be prepared to vote on these at the next board meeting. I'd also just like to mention that there are eight policies here, and they all have to do with behavioral content, anti-harassment for students and staff, and the overall reporting of any type of misconduct. So we do want to read these and pay close attention to them. The next item on the agenda is 9.03, the facilities update. I believe Mr. Denny might do the presentation, but Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Thanks for the brief opportunity just to update you on what's happening. I could probably do it in one word, but I have to put an exclamation point at the end, and that is the word walls. So we're starting to see walls in the projects. It's starting to really come to life. Just by way of review, for folks in the audience and anyone watching from home, this is our website. So if you go to our website and you navigate your way to the bottom of the page on the right side, you can see construction updates for our New Tech campuses. And the Weekly Blitz is put out every week, like the name might suggest, and you can click that link and jump out to a brief synopsis of what's going on with both projects, the 712 Building here in Forest Park and the K6 Project, south of Sharon Road in Green Hills. Just briefly, in this photo, this is a little exciting, so I'll just touch on this briefly. Again, you're actually starting to see cinder block walls being put in. These are the foundation walls. That wall in particular is special because it's four courses thick, and it's the wall between the middle school gym at the, right out here, and the auditorium. So it allows... So it allows significant amount of soundproofing, so that you don't get sound, but you can have a middle school basketball game and a play going on at the same time, and they shouldn't be able to hear each other, which is pretty remarkable. I had the privilege of standing just a little to the right of what you see there. That is the actual stage wall for the stage in the auditorium. So I stood on the stage, at least such as it is now, last Thursday, took some photos. So it is happening.
So you, oh, you stood on the stage.
Stood on the stage. It's just dirt right now, but I was standing on the stage.
No, no dancing, no steps, no moves.
Definitely no dancing. There were about forty construction workers on that site, they all would have been completely mortified, as would I. So we, we don't do that, we don't do that to people.
Mrs. Denny wanted me to ask you that question, sorry.
She already knows. So this is an exciting time. You can start to see some of the footers for the anchoring of the steel that's going to go in. And so we're definitely excited. They're making really good progress right now. So we've had some good weather, hope it, hope to see it continue.
Bravo for staying on top of that, Mr. Denny. Incredible.
It's my pleasure. Thanks. I have a handout if you're interested.
Yes, please.
Thank you for not dancing.
Twisting your ankle on a piece of gravel or something.
Mrs. Denny, next time he comes up, you know, he'll be up next month. Can we get some music in the background to inspire us?
A little tap dancing. Thank you, Mr. Denny and Mr. Smith. I don't know, this is, you, you did a good job explaining this to us. If anybody has any questions for Mr. Denny? Again, this content is just meant to keep us informed and aware of the facilities and the progress that is being made, and we appreciate you for sharing that with us.
Mr. Denny, did you say this is a weekly? It's, so, Weekly Blitz, that's what it says at the top, right there. Okay. That's what it says, doesn't it? Okay, moving on.
Thank you again, Mr. Denny. The next item on the agenda is ten point oh one, which is Superintendent's Recommendation for Ri-, Revised Academy of Global Studies Coordinator Job Description. Mr. Smith, you do have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board, I'm going to have Ms. Wilson come up if you have any questions about the Revised Ac-, Academy of Global Studies Coordinator's Job Description. And we'll combine ten point zero two, the seven twelve department head job description. Some of these descriptions don't really change very much, but we decided that we would bring the Board up to speed to let you know if there were any changes, anything that you need to be aware of prior to your, your, your approval.
So actually, the positions have been in existence for years, but just not formal, they didn't have formal job descriptions. So what we've done is, we have updated them and formalized them, and that's what's before you, and we're just voting on, asking for your vote for approval. And they are consistent with the new salary schedule that you approved back in, I think it was September of two thousand eighteen.
So this is just really?
Codifying what, what they're actually doing.
Well, I think at the beginning of the year, you talked about that this is what we were going to do, we're going to start reviewing all of the job descriptions and making some changes.
Right.
So, so this is in a new position, there's no new money.
No new money. This is something we've, you've already approved the actual money for this, and we've done this for years. We've made a few changes to, we wanted to make sure the expectations were in writing. So we've had facilitators and lead teachers and things like that over the years. But what Dr. Terry Holden did was put her expectations in writing, along with, you know, what, what is expected outside of the normal workday. And that's what's in front of you right now.
Okay, Board, a motion is in order. We're, even though she's going to present these together, we have to vote on them separate. So for ten point oh one, a motion is in order to approve the Revised Academ- Academy of Global Studies Coordinator Job Description.
I'll make a motion to approve the Revised Acc- Academy of Global Studies Coordinator Job Description as presented.
I'll second.
And I, I did have one question. So this will go into place today or for the upcoming school year, the way that this is described? Because I know you said exists now without?
It's already in place, but formally, it will be in effect for next year. So we post it for next year, and we'll do interviews, and if someone said, can I see the job description? Now we can hand them one.
Okay.
Are there any other questions on ten point oh one? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Ragless.
Aye.
Mr. Birdy.
Aye.
Dr. Culetti.
Aye.
Mrs. Coon.
Aye.
Dr. Johnson.
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. Mrs. Wilson, if you would, because there's two job descriptions, right? Okay, okay, well, the next item is the Revised seven through twelve Department Head Job Description. Mr. Superintendent Smith, Mrs. Wilson, if you want to take that one too.
It's this exact same thing, so that, all of the job descriptions before you are just being formally updated and codified. Before, they were positions that we had in the district, we had department heads, we had an AGS coordinator. Now it's in writing and, and the expectations are spelled out.
Okay, with that being said, Board a motion is in order, and then if you have any questions on the seven twelve Department Head Job Description, so let's get the motion on the floor.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the Revised seven to twelve Department Head Job Description as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded.
And same question, this will go into effect next year, and it, this hasn't, while it might be a position that's filled right now, this is the first time that it's, the job description or the, the general description and the essential duties and responsibilities have been officially outlined for this.
Yes, yes. And they're consistent with the compensation that the Board approved in September.
Are there additional jobs, like a supplementary, that are, haven't been written up yet that you expect to do?
So we have supplementals that are substantial, and then some that a principal might say. And that's kind of how these positions have sort of evolved over the years. So if someone has like a recycling club supplemental, there may not be a job description for that yet, but if it grows and becomes substantial and it's year after year, that's something that we definitely need to, to codify.
And is this considered supplemental?
These are all supplemental, these aren't actual teaching positions, they are supplemental outside of the teacher contract day. And they go to our teachers that are currently here. And they just supplement their income by doing extra duties for, for extra pay.
The additional part of it, Ms. Coon, is it protects the employee so that the employer can't just start adding more stuff onto it. So it says, here are some definitives of some things we expect you to do, and so that we can have fair labor practices, this is an opportunity for them to look at it, say, this is what I signed up for, as opposed to all these other things you're trying to add on at the end.
No, no, I appreciate that.
That's actually the, sort of the genesis of how some of these came about. So like the AGS facilitator, years ago, Kevin Jones, when we first started AGS, he took on additional responsibilities. He did it as just part of his, his daily counselor job. But it's grown, and so now it's grown from, you know, just sort of doing it as a labor of love to planning these trips, planning these, you know, activities. It's really grown, so it requires now a more substantial.
Yeah, no, I would agree that it should, should be done.
And, and Ms. Wilson, I appreciate that you all set our expectations at the beginning of the year, that this is the process that you would be taking us through, because I think it is a very important part of shared accountability. Accountability for the individuals who are getting a supplemental to be able to deliver expectation, and for us to be able to see the product, whether or not they're delivering the expectations as well. So, and it also, it protects the employee, but it also protects the district as well.
Absolutely.
So thank you for that.
Okay, I guess, again, just to reiterate one time, that these are not new positions, they're just redefining the work that's already been, been, being done. So if there's not any other discussion, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Ragless.
Aye.
Mr. Birdy.
Aye.
Dr. Culetti.
Aye.
Mrs. Coon.
Aye.
Dr. Johnson.
Aye. Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Thank you, Mr. Smith. The next item on the agenda is ten point oh three, the Superintendent's Recommendation for Personnel Schedules. Superintendent Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Board, you'll be voting on Schedule A, Resignations. And I'd like to say something about Schedule B before the Board takes a vote. The Board President and Vice President doing the agenda critique wanted to have definitive information about certificated licencers. So you'll see that there's an additional box of when those certificates expire for each employee, just to make sure that our work is current. And we will have Schedule C, Personal Employment Support Staff, and you'll see that several of these people are required to have a Activities Permit, Educational Aid Permit, excuse me. And then there's a Personal Employment for Certificated and Non-Certificated, including extra duties. Some people will have to have, based on their involvement with students, like softball, track. There will be a Pupil Activities Permit for that. And then finally, there is the Leaves, which is Schedule E. So the recommendations to approve personnel schedules as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board a motion would be in order to approve the personnel schedules?
I'd like to move that we approve the personnel schedules as presented.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion?
I just had a question, which one is resignations, the, which, I can't find it for some reason, and I had a question from?
Which is A. Schedule A.
E?
Leaves.
A.
No, the, the resignations, A.
Oh, A.
I just had a question, it, I'm noticing that on the math side at the high school, that there's a lot of, wow, I won't say a lot, but there's a couple teachers that are leaving. And I just wondered if there's any, the reason why perhaps? Because it just says resignation, obviously it doesn't give a specific reason. I was curious about, from a mathematics point of view on the higher level in, in the high school.
Well, before, before we go to that, there's a revised code about, talking about specific personnel, so.
Well, I don't want to talk about people, but, sorry.
It's in our process.
Yes, yeah, sorry.
So every employee that leaves the district goes through an exit interview. And we do, I do that with every single employee. And so that starts, you know, in early May, and we get feedback to find out if it was something we did, or if it's just life, you know, sometimes, you know, people say they are moving, a lot of people move for different reasons, promotions, admit, you know. So I will be collecting that information, and I don't report it out in a personally identifiable form, but I do report that to our executive team and our principals in aggregate form, so that if there are any patterns, we can talk about those.
Right, I was just, I was just talking specifically, that wouldn't be appropriate, but I was just concerned from a mathematics point of view in retaining teachers for mathematics programs.
Right, right. So if, if there's information that comes from those exit interviews that suggests there's a pattern or an issue that we need to address, then we would present that to Teaching and Learning and the Superintendent, and we would take appropriate action.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Ragless.
Aye.
Mr. Birdy.
Aye.
Dr. Culetti.
Aye.
Mrs. Coon.
Aye.
Dr. Johnson.
Aye. That vote passes unanimously.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is ten point oh four, which is the second read of New Replacement, Rescinded, and Revised Board Policy. There are a total of ten policies here for consideration. Mr. Smith, would you like to have some discussion on this before we call the vote?
Thank you. Board, I'd like to strike twenty-two seventy-one from the recommendations. That one came from Neola, and it needs to have more information vetted before the Board votes on it. It's the section where it talks about giving a student another opportunity in the event that they struggle in CCP. It lists some alphabetical listings, but they don't have any language associated with it. So before the Board would vote on it, we will strike that one from the list for today, and we will come back in May.
Okay, so with that being said, Board, a motion would be in order to adopt then the other nine policies that are on the table.
I'll make a motion to approve the New Replacement, Rescind, and Revised Board Policies as, well, as presented, minus Revised Policy PO twenty-two seventy-one.
College Credit Plus.
College Credit Plus program.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Other than we now know that twenty, PO twenty-two seventy-one, the College Credit Plus Program policy will be reviewed and brought back to us. Will it come back Superintendent, with our next, we have some first reads, so we'll consider this one like another first read then?
Well, we actually have.
It'll come back next?
But there's some additional language that needs to be part of it. And Dr. Johnson, you wanted to take some time to talk about twenty-one eleven, where we, the terminology has changed from involvement to engagement.
Yeah, I mentioned that at last month's meeting, that the parent and family engagement, it was involvement, they changed the word to engagement, and it also included now anyone who has guardianship. And I don't know that it had that before, and that's a Neola change as well. So, thank you, Mr. Smith, for reminding me about that, because we had talked about that. Any other discussion?
Yeah, we were really ahead of our times when we found the incredible Mrs. Denny, and she is a Community Engagement Coordinator, not the Community Involvement Coordinator.
Right.
So we were very specific. I think Neola followed us once they saw that we hired her. That's just my take on it.
Nothing wrong with that. Okay, if there's no other questions or discussion on any of these policies, Board a motion would, we already have our motion, seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Sure. Mrs. Ragless.
Aye.
Mr. Birdy.
Aye.
Dr. Culetti.
Aye.
Mrs. Coon.
Aye.
Dr. Johnson.
Aye. That vote passes unanimously as well. The next item on the agenda is ten point oh five, which is a resolution for National Teachers Appreciation Week. And being a teacher, professor myself, I will read the resolution, and then Board will entertain a motion. The resolution is National Teacher Appreciation Week, May the sixth through the tenth, two thousand nineteen. Whereas the week of May the sixth through tenth, two thousand nineteen, is National Teacher Appreciation Week. And whereas public schools have been in the gateway to success for every generation of Americans, and whereas a strong effective system of public school education for all children and youth is essential to our democratic system of government, and whereas public schools are at work shaping the future for a whole new generation of young Americans who will take their places in education, business, industry, and government. And whereas no other profession has so great an opportunity to make a lasting and life-changing impact on the lives of so many. And whereas teachers empower, inform, teach, enlighten, share, enrich, create, motivate, mentor, and touch the minds of those students they are entrusted with. And whereas it is appropriate for the Winton Woods City School District to pay tribute to the teaching profession as a whole, and to recognize teachers for their dedication and for their commitment to challenge and educate the youth of our schools and community. Therefore, be it resolved that Winton Woods City School Board of Education formally designates the week of May the sixth through the tenth, two thousand nineteen, as National Teacher Appreciation Week, adopted this twenty-second day of April, two thousand nineteen. Board, I would like to entertain the motion for that resolution at this time.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution, our National Teacher Appreciation Week, May sixth through the tenth of two thousand and nineteen.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Ragless.
Aye.
Mr. Birdy.
Aye.
Dr. Culetti.
Aye.
Mrs. Coon.
Aye.
Dr. Johnson.
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda, which is a resolution for National School Nurse Day for May the eighth, two thousand nineteen, I'd like to ask Mrs. Ragless to read the resolution.
I will be happy to read that resolution, given that I have a Warrior graduate who is a nurse.
Perfect.
So whereas it is proper to acknowledge school nurses for their professional contribution to encourage and support a healthy environment and education for our nation's youth and for the students and staff of the Winton Woods City School District. And whereas school nurses provide a vital role to the institution of public education through their unique expertise for managing primary and through their unique expertise for managing primary and preventative health care. And whereas, school nurses are diligent, motivated, caring professionals who influence and promote a healthy school environment that is safe and conducive to learning. Be it therefore resolved this 22nd of April, 2019, that the Wintonwood City School District Board of Education hereby recognizes, recognizes the continued effort, commitment, and resolve of school nurses to make a difference, and proclaims May 8th, 2019, as National School Nurse Day in the Wintonwood City School District, adopted this 22nd day of April, 2019.
Thank you, Mrs. Ruggles. Board, a motion to approve the resolution would be in order.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for National School Nurse Day, May 8th, 2019, as presented.
Second?
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion?
Just want to note that 20, we need to fix the year.
Right, there is a error in printing. It says 20, 2019 with an extra eight there, so we need to make that correction in the resolution. So note it. There's nothing else, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Mrs. Kinn?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 10.08, which is the, I don't know why we did this one, we skipped, anyway, 10.08, which is the 20, is it what?
10.07, National School Nutrition.
Okay, so that, I guess that's why I was confused, so I'm looking at a different agenda. So it's 10.07?
10.07.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, here we go. 10.07, which is the Resolution for National School Nutrition Employee Week. Okay, I was looking at the wrong thing. May the 6th through the 10th, 2019. And I'd like to ask Dr. Culetti to read this resolution, if you would, please.
My pleasure. It's School Nutrition Employee Week Official Proclamation. Whereas nutritious meals at school are an essential part of the school day, and whereas the staff of the district's school meals and nutrition department are committed to providing healthful nutritious meals to the district's children. And whereas, the men and women who prepare and serve school meals help nurture our children through their daily interactions and support. And whereas, the week of May 6th to 10th, 2019, is School Nutrition Employee Week. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Wintonwood School District expresses its deep appreciation to these valuable employees, and commends their good work on behalf of children, adopted this 22nd day of April, 2019.
Thank you, Dr. Culetti. Board, a motion to approve this resolution would be in order.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for National School Nutrition Employee Week, May 6th through 10th, 2019.
Second?
It's been motioned and seconded. Any questions for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Mrs. Kinn?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. Now that vote passes unanimously. Now I'm at 10.08, which is the next item on the agenda, which is the 2019-2020 School Lunch Price Increase. I think, is Mr. Denny going to report out on this one?
Yeah, before Mr. Denny comes up, President Johnson, there was a discrepancy, and I believe that the board received the elementary price of $2.50, and it reflected only five cents, but it was really 25 cents. So hopefully, the $2.50 current price and a proposed price of $2.75 is reflective in your notes. Yes, okay. Mr. Denny?
Thank you again, Mr. Smith, and good evening again, Board. You should have before you a memorandum, just advising of some information required into the federal school lunch program. Essentially, there's a metric that operates every year in the background, and we're required to plug in our numbers. Those numbers will dictate whether or not we're currently in line with the federal standard for local contribution. So this past year, our numbers equated to an average lunch price across the K-12, excuse me, pre-K-12 system of $2.72. And about 80% of our income for food service comes from the federal government, comes from the school lunch program. So as a result, when the calculations ran, it turned out that we had to have a national, or excuse me, a weighted average lunch price under the National School Lunch Program of $2.85. And again, that's just raising the local contribution. There's only two ways of doing that. One is contributing from the general fund, the other is raising the school lunch price. Clearly, the Food Service Fund is expected to operate in the black, so the logical and most common alternative is to go ahead and raise the price. We have not raised the price in a couple of years. So you can see modest increases shown under the proposed prices compared to the current price. Current price is $2.50 at the elementary level, and we would propose a 25 cent increase. Middle school price would be from 325 to 350, again, a quarter. And we're not proposing any increased prices on the high school deli or milk, and added milk, if that's what the children would like to opt for. Making those changes that are easy for families to relate to and kids to remember would equate to a $2.86 average lunch, which would meet the federal requirement. So we just ask for your, respectfully ask for your consideration at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Denny. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, a motion to approve the 2019-2020 School Lunch Price Increase would be in order.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the 2019-2020 School Lunch Price Increase as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion?
Mr. Denny, I don't know if I missed it in what you said, because I was scrolling here. But I know that we have been very diligent in making sure that we did not raise the prices of lunch for the children. Can you help me understand? I know you said that there was a formula that, can you go over that again and make sure that I'm clear on why we had to do this?
Absolutely. The federal government essentially requires a certain local match.
A local match?
A local match, right. And there's two ways to achieve that. One is contributing from some fund, which for school boards is general fund. It's never advisable. The other is raising the lunch price. And you have to basically have the local contribution as expected by the federal government be roughly in alignment to the proportion at which you collect reimbursements in the federal lunch program.
I think that's the part that I missed.
They basically want you to pay your fair share, so to speak, and that falls on the families and students that do not qualify for free reduced lunch. So most of our, about 72% of our families qualify. So we're talking about the remaining 28%, how much they would be expected to pay. And it's basically a federal online calculator that is used, and we check the numbers every year. Last year, for sure, I know we didn't raise it. Maybe the year before we didn't, I'd have to go back and look. I think it might be this is two years we have not had to raise, which is, is great.
So I know that there's those forms that need to be filled out. Do you see an increase or decrease, or is it about the same about how the return of those free and reduced lunch forms coming back?
Just to clarify your question, the rate at which they are submitted, or the rate at which people qualify?
I guess both.
Fair enough. So we have not noticed a decrease or increase, I'd say, in the rate at which forms are being filled out. They, one of the challenges for families is that regardless of whether you qualified the year before, or regardless of whether or not you receive direct cash assistance, you have to apply every year.
Yeah.
And so that's a challenge for families to think, well, I just did this. And sometimes they have three children in the district, and they think, well, I already filled that out, and they, well, you filled it out for the high school. Unfortunately, you have a child in the middle school and then the elementary school, or something like that. So the rate at which they come in is roughly the same. We have seen a very slight decrease in the actual free reduced lunch rate from last year to this year, but I think you're talking about a percent. Does that sound about right, Mr. Smith? So I, roughly holding steady in terms of the rate at which families are qualifying, but, but what's perhaps at least of note about that is, over the last, I'd say, 12, 13 years, we've steadily gone up. So this is one of the last, first years we've either remained steady or slightly decreased in a long time.
And they've been very diligent in the enrollment center, making sure that families fill out the form. They do it in a very, very, just a really nice way, as opposed to kids coming back and family saying, well, I filled out the form before. And it's basically just a conversation, this is a yearly activity. So we're not saying that we believe you made more, made less, this is just consistency.
Well, when it comes down to federal processes, I understand that some of the challenges there. Is there any hope that they may automate this? Have you heard anything about them automating?
They being the feds, no.
Meaning, yeah.
They, they us, yes, we try to automate it more every year, so.
Oh, we could do that?
We have, yes, every year that goes by, we get a little better. And technology is really what's sort of forging that frontier for us, like the, we're able to do more and more on these phones now.
Oh, okay.
And phones and different, you know, tablets and mobile devices and things like that. So not only, as Mr. Smith said, can a, and a family who's newly enrolled, admitted to the district or newly enrolled, complete their free reduced lunch form online right there, other families that are already enrolled with children in the district can do it as well.
So it is already automated?
To a degree, yes. And then we get better every year, and we're actually looking at it.
The feds do like their paper.
They do.
Absolutely.
Yes.
They do, yes, they do.
Yes. So it's definitely something that evolves.
Thank you.
But we want to make it as easy for families to sign up as possible. Our mission is to feed children, because they're going to do better in life and in school if we can do that.
Absolutely, they will, thank you.
Mr. Denny, do you see a decrease in the number of high schoolers that might fill out the form, like their parents get it to them, and then when they get into high school, it's kind of, I'm too cool for this, or?
Absolutely.
Do you see the decrease?
Absolutely.
So that, I mean, that, that might not be a steady percent every year, but fewer high schoolers will submit the form, even if their parents filled it out. So in that way, automation might help, if the parent could fill it out online, and then they could still be assured that there would be a lunch there.
In many cases, same family.
Right.
And they're qualifying in the younger grades, and yet at the older grades, that child is not being claimed, or what have you.
Yeah, so an automation would really help with that.
For sure.
Oh, I, I was just going to say, I, so to kind of follow that thinking, so if they go on, if they go into the enrollment center and they have children in different buildings, can they fill out one form and check off all the boxes? You have to do each one separate? Okay. Never mind, that was my.
Basically, it'll, like.
If only, right?
Yeah.
We can't make it so simple, it's.
That would be a nice thing to do.
We love them.
Last question, actually to piggyback on what Dr. Johnson said with the high schoolers being cool, this is more of a process question. How, are, are kids identified when they go to get their lunch that they're free and reduced? And how do we, right, so I'm just trying to understand why, you know, a high schooler would be like, oh, I'm too cool, if the process doesn't, you know, distinguish, oh, you have something special that identifies you as a free and reduced.
So we, thank you for the question, first of all, because that's of critical importance, because it's about dignity, really. So when a child comes through the line, they just punch in their student ID number. Not the lower grades, they even have cards that can be scanned.
Everybody has cards?
Well, in the lowest, like primaries. We've actually gone to fingerprint scanning from about grade two up to six. And part of the problem with kindergarten and first grade is their little fingers, God bless them, they're so cute and so small that you can't get a good read on the fingerprint scanner. So we're actually exploring, expanding that in the Midland High School, because it's much faster. So one of the challenges kids have is they don't have enough time to eat lunch. And that's not good for your digestion, it's technically a wellness issue, right?
However, the distributed dining will solve some of those issues along the way.
It's a nice step in that direction, for sure, yeah. We think it's actually got the potential to solve lots of issues that schools have dealt with for a long time. But the fingerprint scanning, we're actually looking, there's actually letters sort of being discussed right now for, for looking at the high school and looking at fingerprint scanning, because again, it'll vastly accelerate. Instead of you punching a number in, you can fingerprint scan. Now, all that said, in theory, no one would know whether you are free reduced lunch rate or not.
High schoolers just think you know.
They think you do, yes. And, you know, and in theory, if you watch really carefully, and you're standing right next to someone, you, maybe you're watching for the exchange of currency. That's about the only way you're going to see it, because if you punch your number in and no one puts their hand out to say that's $2.50, that's the only piece we've not been able to completely eliminate in terms of making sure that no one can tell at all. But we endeavor for that.
So I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to attempt to prove my theory.
Yes, sir.
All right. So there's a beautiful, nice high schooler running the cameras right now.
Yes.
High schoolers think that everybody knows everything about them, and that they're watching them at all times. True or false? Okay, all right, there you go. Only because we are.
Our kids are sophisticated.
No, we're not. But they just think that people know things about them that they don't, and there are times where they just need to just be okay.
Well, Mr. D, the Easy Pay though would act the same way. There wouldn't be a transaction, you would punch your number, and it would be calculated against.
That's very true.
So you really wouldn't know if you had Easy Pay, or.
Correct. That is absolutely accurate. It's all happening at the, inside the point-of-sale system, and you can't see it. All right. That's a, that's a great point.
Very good, sir.
All right. Dr. Culetti? Yes, sir.
So, listening to this discussion, it seems to me a very important point, from, as you say, the dignity of each individual. So will you be working to find a way to eliminate the transactions with money?
Always.
Will you try and do that? Tell us soon how, what, what possibles?
Would love to. It would require influencing something that we can't control, but we can influence, which is a family's decision to opt into using electronic payment versus actual currency.
And some have.
And, and many have, yes, some have. And I appreciate Ms. Coon's point.
That, that's what I was used all the time.
Yeah, we, we certainly did that with our own children, you know, when they came through the system. We.
If I could interject, very small portion of our lunch sales are cash daily, very small portion.
And we see that from the deposits.
Most of the people are prepaid through the Easy Pay system.
So that's good. Yeah, so the answer to your question is yes. One of, the other thing we study every year, and Mr. Smith places a lot of priority on this, is the CEP program, which is Community Eligibility Provision. In that model, nobody pays. It's all federal program reimbursement. The issue with that is it's all based on direct certification from the state of Ohio through what's called the CURGE system, CURGE to EMESTA, and it's basically involves those that receive direct cash assistance. So right now, we hover around 40% in the district. You have to get to about 60 before that becomes financially feasible, and we're just not there. We don't know, the trend data is very spotty. We don't, can't tell if we're headed there, so we just continue to monitor. But the nice part about that is there's no forms, there's no cash exchange, there's no Easy Pay, it's, the entire community becomes eligible. And there are some communities near us and school districts near us that that, that is the way it works, that they qualify for that, but we're not there yet.
Interesting, very good. Okay, thank you, Mr. Denny. It has already been motioned and seconded. Quite a few questions, a lot of interest in that. Seeing that there's no other questions or discussion, Mr. Seymour, would you call that vote?
Mrs. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Culetti?
Aye.
Mrs. Kinn?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That passes unanimously. Our speakers are kind of hard today. The next item on the agenda is ten point oh nine, which is the resolution authorizing the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association. I would like to ask Mrs. Paula Coon to read that resolution.
This is the Board of Education Governing Board Resolution authorizing the two thousand nineteen, twenty membership to the Ohio High School Athletic Association. Whereas the Board of Education Governing Board and its administration desire for the schools with one or more grades at the seventh through twelfth grade level under their jurisdiction to be voluntary members of OHSAA. Now therefore, let it, or be it resolved by the Board of Education Governing Board that all schools listed on the reverse side of this card do hereby voluntarily renew membership in the OHSAA. Not too far up. That's my train of thought there. Sorry, sorry. Are hereby, uh, voluntary renew the membership of OS, OHSAA. And in doing so, the Constitution, Bylaws, Regulations, and Business Rules of the OHSAA are hereby adopted by this board as or for its minimum student athlete eligibility, eligibility requirements. Notwithstanding the foregoing, the board reserves the right to raise student athlete eligibility standards as it deems appropriate for the schools and students under its jurisdiction. And be it further resolved that the schools under the board's jurisdiction agree to conduct their athletics program, programs in accordance with the Constitution, Bylaws, Regulations, Business Rules, and interpretations and decisions of the OHSAA and the co-op, and cooperate fully and timely with the Executive Director's Office of the OHSAA in all matters related to the intrascholastic athletic programs of the schools. Furthermore, the schools under the board's jurisdiction shall, shall be the primary enforcers of the OHSAA, Constitution, Bylaws, Regulations, Business Rules, and, and interpretation and rulings rendered by the Executive Director's Office. The administrator, the administrative heeds, heeds of these schools understand that failure to discharge the pri- the duty of primary enforcement may result fines, removal from tournaments, suspensions from membership, and/or other such penalties as prescribed by Bylaw eleven on this resolution, or date of resolution, April twenty-second, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you, Mrs. Coon. Um, board, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing twenty nineteen, twenty twenty membership in the Ohio, Ohio High School Athletic Association, OHSAA, as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any uh questions for discussion?
Yes, Madam President, the uh, the resolution uh for this particular endeavor, when the schools actually become one grade seven through twelve, this actually would still apply. So we wouldn't have to have a separate, because the IRAN is probably more than likely going to be the same. So we would have one IRAN, which would be forty-four, oh, eight, one. And merging the seventh and eighth grade to the high school would be one resolution with one IRAN.
Great point. Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Anything else?
Mr. Seymour?
Honey, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
That was such a compliment.
Okay, it's been a long day.
It's a family show.
I got to work this morning at seven o'clock. I don't know my own name right now.
I understand.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith. I'm looking right at you.
That's all right.
Okay? Yikes. I am thinking, Mr. Seymour, would you call that vote?
Mrs. Ragless?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Kupuletti?
Aye.
Mrs. Ken?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. Okay. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is eleven point oh one, Board of Education Reports and Legislative Reports. Mrs. Coon, you have the floor.
Thank you. I submitted um for your review some upcoming um uh House bills, Senate bills, and it goes by week. So it's an overview from um what's going on up at this state of the Columbus uh, who are the legislative group. Um, there's sep- well, they did uh sign into law, I think there's only one law they passed so far, that they won't hold us. Uh, the schools um are unharmed by the increase to gas tax. So that was good that they um didn't incur that extra debt to us as a school district. There are a couple um points just to point out to you, a couple bills. There are, one in particular, there's two different um House bills regarding the distress commissions in Ohio and how some are dissolving, some are proposing to amend in some way. So I thought that was interesting, that um there's a lot of um agreement, both sides, both Republican and Democrats, on this particular issue. Then we can kind of review through there and see if anything catches your eye. There's a lot of um proposed uh changes to school funding, which isn't new. Um, so it's be interesting to see what they end up doing. Did you have some thoughts to Dr. Johnson?
Nope, I'm gonna cover it in. Very good. Thank you, um, Mrs. Coon. Next up is eleven point oh two, the Great Oaks Career Technical Center report. Mr. Birdy?
At the uh most recent Great Oaks School Board meeting, they passed out some information on the Ohio Fair School Funding Plan that is out there right now, which is uh, I guess spearheaded by Cup and Patterson, rep- the rep- our representatives. Some interesting thing to uh think about here is widely recognized that our current funding formula is seriously flawed, and you think of it as a funding formula. But the reality is over eighty-two percent of the districts in the state of Ohio are either on a cap or a guarantee. So a formula is not really coming into play for, for a lot of our school districts. So. And as Mr. Seymour would like to remind me, that this is a long way from becoming anything that's a reality. So, but there is a, there is a website, I think on the, on the bottom of the uh written part that you can get signed up for updates, if you want to get some information. And there were two Winton Woods students who were uh highlighted in Students in the Spotlight. We have a, and I will apologize if I get the names wrong here, but Vershaun Flowers Ingram, who's in the Commercial Residential Electricity Program at Great Oaks, and a Nigel Akalanana from the Diamond Oaks Surgical Technology Group. So, and that's my report.
Very good. Thank you. It's nice to see our students being highlighted in such highly qualified professions. Okay, uh, the next item on the agenda is twelve point oh one, uh Board Motions and Recommendations. And I do not think that we have any. Not unless someone knows something that I don't know, which is very plausible. Okay, I think we're all in agreement that we don't have any. So, moving to the next item is thirteen uh point oh one, which is a comment from the members of the board and superintendent and treasurer. Mr. Seymour, do you have anything you would like to add?
No, but thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Uh, Mr. Smith?
No.
You don't have anything? Okay, we'll move on. Mr. Birdy?
Just a reminder, State of the Schools, May seventh. It's always entertaining with Mr. Smith doing the presentation. So please, please show up for that. Love to have the community there. Um, Honors Diploma Dinner and Senior Awards on May fourteenth. That's a, a really good night. He pointed out it's scheduled till ten. It probably will last that long, because we have a lot of, a lot of students to be recognized. So that's, that's the good news. And uh, Dr. Kupuletti, at our last meeting, uh, we were challenged to uh come up with a vegetable recipe for the, for the book, and he allowed us to uh sample his recipe of split pea soup. I am not a fan of peas, but the splits pea soup was exceptional.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kupuletti. And uh, just personal note, grandson born uh in March in the district, on my birthday. So.
Well, I didn't realize it was your birthday.
So it was a great day.
Yes. Congratulations.
And that's all for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Birdy. Grandparenting is so much fun.
It is.
All right, Dr. Kupuletti, do you have anything you want to share?
No, but thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Ragless?
Um, over the last month or so, I had an opportunity to do what I love, which is engaging the students. So I had an opportunity to join students in the middle school at the Black Violinist. And it was an amazing um experience. I tell you, our students, I was expecting them to be a little bit more, but they seemed like they were really um critiquing the violinists, because they had moved, they were listening very intently. But, I mean, it was a huge event um for our community um in Winton Woods and outside of Winton Woods. So it was really good to experience that. Had an also, also had an opportunity to speak to girls, to queens, um, with my daughter, who's a for, a fellow warrior, talking about colorism and self-esteem, and really helping the girls recognize their self-wor- worth, and then understanding that this is a village that's working together and to leverage their resources to um be the best that they can be. Um, and also, um, I'm enjoying continuing building partnerships for the school district. Had a couple meetings with Mercy. Um, and it should be noted that we have a great partnership, have had a partnership with uh Mercy, but are expanding it. And they are official partners of actually OH, or what is it? The Official Medical?
Official Medical Partner.
Medical Par- Ohio's High School. Athletic Association. So, given the fact that, you know, we looked at today how we're expanding some of our athletic offerings and some of the things that Mercy is doing to prepare our kids with concussion, um, protocols, met, you know, just, you know, physicals. It's just a great partnership. Um, it is great to have partners that align with where we're going. So I'm looking forward to um continuing to find partnerships to support our goals. Um, and lastly, um, Mrs. Sneed and um Katie Stevens, it's really good to see the passion. I used to call Ms. Steed, um, Sneed, the regulator. She, she was on point. So it's really good to see them doing the awesome things in our district, as well as growing and at the state and helping to mentor some other teachers. So kudos to both of them.
Madam President, may I have one?
Absolutely. Yes, go ahead.
I attended the Black Violin the day after, uh, Ms. Ragless and our students. And the message was very clear. And that is, you can overcome any obstacles and do exactly what you want to do, and ignore the noise around you, and you will be successful. And I think that was a wonderful message uh for everyone in the room, and especially our students. And I know that the same message is given to our students every day by the teachers here. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kupuletti. All right, Mrs. Coon?
Uh, piggyback a little bit, just an early salute to our teachers um for Teacher Appreciation Week. It's really, teachers should be appreciated every day, all year long, the work that they do, that are administrators. Um, it's collaboration of many professionals that are working together uh to work for our students and to offer them the opportunities that they need. Um, I did want to congratulate our students that worked very tirelessly on their musical. It was a great production. Mary Poppins was, uh, they failed to disappoint. They're a great ambassador to our community. It was nice to see a lot of, um, some of our seniors in our area. Hopefully, they take advantage of the free uh admission to our, to our events, to see the powerful work that goes on. I also did like the, the concept, the kindergarten shadow day was very intriguing to me. So I wondered what that was, looked like. So I would, uh, I would like to kindergarten shadow when I grow up, maybe one day. Uh, so I thought that was kind of a neat concept. Uh, I like the innovative, creative things we have going on our schools to uh help our children transition from step to step to step. So I think that's, I, I like those kind of events. Um, and again, thank you to our nursing staff and who, um, to our food, uh, nutrition, uh, people. So, again, without the work of all the dedicated people, uh, our students wouldn't be served as well as they are. So that, that's important to acknowledge, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Coon. Um, I just want to first start with um the Board Retreat. We had a retreat this month, at the beginning of the month, and uh kudos to Mrs. Ragless for putting it together. Um, it was a very enriching retreat. Um, we did it off-site, which was the first time that I've, since I've been on the board, that we went off-site. But it was not only educational, it was also interactive. And um you got to see some of the board members have a little fun and encourage each other uh in some extracurricular type activities at the off-site event. I won't tell you what we did, because it was kind of. But it was fun. It was fun and it was educational. And um I appreciate the uh district for allowing us to uh do that. We had, um, oh gosh, his name, Steve Horton, thank you. I wanted to call him John for some reason. Steve Horton from OSBA. I don't know, I got all these Johns in my mind. Um, but uh come in and uh share with us, which was really, really, really a good activity. Again, thank you to all of our community partners that uh do so much for us. Uh, I didn't realize until Mr. Smith was going over it with us, that Jake Sweeney did so much for our district. And um, you know, it's a, it's a large impact. Uh, we, I knew that we were building a partnership with um Mercy, but you know, when you have these people that, these organizations that do so much for our district, that, you know, we can pay that forward by going out and supporting them in one way or the other. But uh, we appreciate what they do for our district uh in letting us uh borrow their vehicles. Again, Mrs. Coon uh spoke about the uh Spring Musical, uh Mary Poppins, which was there. Don't forget about report card time, parents. Get those report cards. It's our last opportunity to shake, you know, a few trees there. Um, again, the Appreciation Week for our teachers and our nurse, uh, and Appreciation Day for nurses and nutrition. All those are very important, just as our teachers and administrators are all important to the self-worth of our uh students within the district. May is going to be a very busy, busy, busy month. So just um pull up the calendar and mark it, you know, on your phone, or however you keep track of your meetings, so that you can get to some of those things. And um, I think that's about it. That's all I had, uh, that I wanted to kind of make sure that I went over. Board, there is a need for an executive session. Um, so uh therefore, I would like to entertain that motion for us to move into executive session.
I'd like to make a motion that we move into executive session.
For the purposes of?
And we need a purpose.
And the purposes are?
For the evaluation.
For the evaluation of the superintendent and the treasurer.
It's been motioned. Um, can I get a second?
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Um, Mr. Seymour, would you call that vote?
Sure. Mrs. Ragless?
Aye.
Mr. Birdy?
Aye.
Dr. Kupuletti?
Aye.
Mrs. Ken?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. Thank you to uh Waycross uh Community for your service in videotaping tonight's meeting. The board will not conduct any other uh meeting when we come out of executive session. With that said, I'd like to call this meeting of the Winton Woods City School Board of Education, regular meeting, Monday, April the twenty-second, adjourned. Thank you. Be safe and have a wonderful evening.